Call this meeting to order the National Planning and Zoning Commission at 7:00 o'clock on May 26th. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Fire evacuation announcement. Exit doors are right behind you. Please, if you need to evacuate, just go right behind you, or you can go out through this set of doors, and then down the stairs and right out the back door there. In case of an emergency, please walk away from the building as far as possible. Thank you. Mr. Secretary, please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Louis Fiore.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
John Petronella is here. Francis Alamo.
Here.
Kiran Majmuddar, absent. Kenneth Holinsky.
He's here remotely.
Remotely. Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
Christian D'Antonio.
Here.
And Nicholas Lefakis is absent.
Looks like he's absent. Seeing that, with full-time member Karim Majmuddar absent tonight, it is Christian D'Antonio's month, so he will be sitting in as a regular member tonight for this meeting. And Vinnie will be on call if needed for that. Of course, Vinnie, you know you can participate in all the discussions, please. Having seen that, approval in the minutes of May 12th.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Higley, seconded by Commissioner Gray. Any discussion? Commissioner Gray?
Yeah, I do have a couple of comments, and I could just be me. On page two, under Old Business, second paragraph, we were talking about the pocket park. But on the second sentence, the first and second sentence was a little confusing. Where it says Mrs. Zapo... I can't say her name, sorry. Zapoal?
Zapoal.
Zap... Thank you. Stated that 11 Thompson Court had been... I'm sorry, wrong line. All right. Stated that the soldier of Civil War statue sits in the middle of the redevelopment site of the Stan Lamagna Center. She stated that they would like to designate that area as a park. It kind of makes it sound like she's saying the Lamagna in front of that little area is the park that we're trying... that they were looking at. And maybe if we could clarify that sentence a little bit better? So...
I think that she was referencing to where it is now, that we would actually maybe make that area where the statue sits currently as a park.
Okay, then.
I think that's what she was referring to.
Right, but it's kind of not clear at the moment, the way it's reading.
Okay.
And then on page three, second...
Would you like to... I think we know what she meant there. Would you like to make an amendment that we add something in that minute to clarify that?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to add... to clarify that a little bit more.
That they would like to designate the area across from the old Thompson Fire Department as a pocket park.
Right. And at that... And then on page three, second paragraph, Commissioner Alamo asked if they can do a MOU, if we could probably put in what an MOU is, because in 20 years, if somebody sees this, they may not understand what our acronym is.
So you could just clarify that for the record now? Because what happens is, we filed the draft minutes, and as they're amended, you have to check these minutes.
Memorandum of understanding.
Yes.
Memorandum of understanding.
Right.
Okay. And then last paragraph, Lori Parker, she stated, second sentence, she stated that she would like to see a moratorium of two years or longer, but it doesn't say what she wants a moratorium on. At that point, she wanted a moratorium. Just some clarifications. Yeah, on large warehouses, buildings. Okay? That's me.
Okay. Anybody else? I have one question that needs to be made. On page eight, halfway down, Other Business. I think it's just a typo, but we don't have a Commissioner Griller. So I think it was...
Oh, yeah.
That's right. It happens. I think it sure was a typo. So let me go through the four corrections to the minutes we'd like to see made. On page two, Old Business, I'm just going to kind of paraphrase here. She stated that they would like to designate the area across from the old TiVo Fire Department as a pocket park, so that the police department has more authority there for loitering and other issues. That's number one. Commissioner Alamo asked if they can do a... What was that?
MOU, memorandum of...
Memorandum of understanding. Thank you very much. I just had a... My brain just went dead there for a minute. Also, on the bottom of page three, we get to Lori Parker paragraph. She said that she would like to see a moratorium of two years or longer on large buildings. And also on page eight, we're going to fix Commissioner Vinnie Grillo's name, so it's not Griller, it's Grillo. Any more discussion on the minutes? Is there a motion for someone to accept with all the amendments, please?
Motion to accept the amendments.
Commissioner Alamo, seconded by Commissioner Higley, to accept the minutes of May 12th with all the amendments and changes we just signified. All those in favor, please. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes. Thank you, Kenny. So let the record show that there was one, two, four, five, seven in favor, and one abstain. Commissioner D'Antoni abstains, he was not present for that meeting. Moving on to item number five, Town Attorney Report. Everyone did receive that in our packet, an update on various cases. Now we'll move on to public participation. At this point in the meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission welcomes comments, concerns, and opinions relating to planning and zoning in Enfield from anyone who is present, provided that no one may discuss any matter of business at this time that is, number one, already elsewhere on the agenda, any matter that is part of an open public hearing of the commission, or any matter where a decision of the commission may be pending. That also includes any pending legal action. Is there anyone here who would like to come up and speak in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission tonight? Is there anyone who would like to come up and speak in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission tonight? For last time, anyone who would like to come up and speak in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission tonight? Thank you. Seeing that, all participation is closed. Now we'll move on to new public hearings. Secretary, open the hearing, please.
Yes. The National Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings at the regular meeting on Thursday, May 26, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. in the Town Council chambers at 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public hearing number 3024, 100 Elm Street, application of the interior addition of a deli. Christopher Algu, applicant, Alliance Energy LLC, owner, map 43, lot 15, BR Zone.
Thank you. Is the applicant or representative here? Please, feel free to come on forward, and just make sure the mic is on, the red button should be lit. Yep. And just identify yourself for the record, please.
My name is Christopher Algu.
You need to pull the mic a little closer if you can.
Sorry.
It's okay.
My name is Christopher Algu.
Thank you. And your address, please?
100 Elm Street, Enfield, Connecticut.
Is that where you live, Christopher?
No, no, that's the address of the...
Yeah.
42 Ridge Road, Glastonbury, Connecticut.
Thank you. Thank you, Christopher.
Sorry.
That's all right. It's okay. Could you give us a brief overview of what you're seeking an application for tonight, please?
Basically, I'm just adding basic deli to the store. Through COVID, it's been a little tough getting through, so we're trying to add other, you know, income coming in. And we had a space available that I wasn't really utilizing as much, and I just thought it would be a good idea. And it's been a few years in the works, kind of going back and forth, the Health Department and stuff like that, so finally, we're here.
Basically, this is the mobile station on Elm Street, correct?
Correct.
And if I read through your application correctly, it's not... I wouldn't say it's a full-blown deli. It's a small deli where you're making sandwiches for customers only?
Correct. There's just going to be basic, you know, lunch meats and bread and, you know, basically. There's no cooking or anything like that.
There's no seating? It's all takeout?
No seating, yeah. It's all takeout.
Pretty much similar to what Dunkin' Donuts is doing in the same building, correct?
Exactly, yeah.
Is there any other questions for the... Commissioner Higley?
You have enough parking for that, right?
Yeah.
For the people to just run in and get their sandwich?
Yeah. It would be basically the same people who are going to Dunkin'.
Yep.
Might grab a sandwich or something like that.
Thank you. Just one quick question. Since they're driving through the Dunkin', would they be able to also get the sandwich?
No.
They actually have to come in?
Dunkin's is a total separate entity.
Okay. Nope. Thank you.
I'm also seeing on the application, you have been in contact with staff, and there are some conditions that are part of this application, and you seem to be agreeable to those conditions.
Yeah, with the Health Department you're talking about, or the...
Yes.
Yeah.
No, no, there's some site-specific conditions. The use shall be limited to the scope menu as approved by the property owner.
Correct.
The interior area used for the deli shall be limited to the area depicted on the floor plan that we have received from dated January 4th.
Correct.
And the use shall not be operation until all necessary town of Enfield and any other permits are issued, and the approvals have been inspected and approved as applicable by Building, Health, and WPA.
Yeah.
Okay?
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Yes, Commissioner Holinsky. Go ahead.
Yeah, I had a question. I'm not sure if this is shown in the report we got, but have the owners officially approved this change at this point?
Yeah.
The property owners?
Yeah, they signed a letter. It was provided in the materials.
Okay. I just didn't... Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Commissioner Alamo?
Yes, I was just going to ask, are you going to be open? I know the gas station is open 24 hours. Will a deli be open 24 hours?
No, most likely not. I mean, the hours will probably be lunch into dinner, you know what I mean? Not 24. It's a little difficult to hold.
Thank you.
Any other questions? You sit right there. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak for or against this application? Is there anyone in the public who would like to come up and speak anything about this Staff have anything they want to add for this application?
No, fairly simple.
Yeah. Any more questions from the commission on this application? Anything else you'd like to add?
No. Thank you for your time.
Seeing that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Higley to close the public hearing, seconded by Commissioner D'Antoni. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is unanimous to close the public hearing? Take a motion to approve with the conditions?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve public hearing number 3024 in accordance with the motion prepared by staff dated May 26, 2022, with the 18 conditions attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Secretary Petronella, seconded by Commissioner Alamo. Any discussion on the approval? Seeing on roll call vote, please.
Yep. One second. Louis Fiore.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
John Petronella is four. Francis Alamo.
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Four.
Christian D'Antonio.
Four.
Thank you. Let the record show it was unanimous, seven, nothing. Your application's been approved. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Whenever you're ready. Mr. Secretary, we'll move on to the next application, PH 3036.
Yeah, the National Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings at the regular meeting on Thursday, May 26, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. in the Town Hall Council chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public hearing number 3036, 33 Palomba Drive, application for a used car dealership, Gail Toyota, Inc., applicant, Macham LLC, owner, map 57, lot 343, BR Zone.
Thank you. Is the applicant or representative here? Please come on up and identify yourself for the record, please.
Michael Green.
And address, please.
687 Hall Hill Road, Summers, Connecticut.
Thank you. Could you briefly describe this application, please? Or take as much time as you like, instead of briefly.
Okay. We just... It's a buy center to buy vehicles from the public, private-party transactions to Gail Toyota. It's located across the street, 33 Palomba Drive. Gail Toyota's at 50 Palomba Drive. We currently meet remotely, meet at customers' houses or at the dealership to complete the transaction. We'd like to be able to meet at that location, 33 Palomba Drive, and be able to complete the transaction there. We are not selling any vehicles there. There is no sales, there is no financing, there is no transaction really on our end. We're buying vehicles from private-party sellers. That's what we're looking to do. So it would be with a special condition.
Are you all set?
Yeah.
Questions from the commission? Commissioner Gray?
Well, I have a couple of questions, probably a lot of questions. But on your website, it's... You've got cars listed for sale as the buy center, and you've got two locations here in Enfield and in West Springfield. So do you sell the cars in Enfield, or do you sell the cars in West Springfield?
The cars are located at 50 Palomba Drive on Gail Toyota's lot.
Okay.
All cars for sale. It's just the Crazy J Scratch and Dent, that's the way we're presenting it. It could be wrong in the sense of, it's not the same business, really. It's not the same department, so...
Can you help clarify?
Those vehicles are for sale at Gail Toyota. They're branded Crazy J Scratch and Dent. They're just bunched together on the website, because it's both Crazy J, that's the whole... Crazy J is the buy center, that's the kind of branding that we're going with. But there's no sales going on, there's no inventory being presented for sale being at 33 Palomba Drive.
Then that ad is very confusing, because if I went on the website to buy center of Enfield, I see cars for sale.
I can separate that.
I'm going to go to buy center of Enfield to buy my car. I'm not going to go to Gail Toyota, because that's not what the ad says. And it's very small, at the bottom is associated with Gail Toyota.
I can separate that. That's no problem. I can pull the inventory off the site. I didn't see it that way, but that's not... We're not getting traffic in that way.
I'm not saying that... But I'm just kind of confused, because you're saying you're not selling cars, but your ads are saying you're selling cars on the website. So that was my first question. And then I got this layout of the property, and you've got 17 spaces for unit four, and I don't know exactly where unit four is, but it all says for Gail Toyota. I'm just kind of concerned about the spaces, because you've got Porter &amp; Chester there, you've got Firestone over there, you've got Enterprise over there, you've got Shine Doctor over there, and I think there's another... There's a lot of cars over there. And I was over there yesterday, and parking lot was pretty full.
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering if there's enough parking for...
I mean, it would be no business, it would be no different than what we're doing now as far as parking spaces. Right now, my used cars are reconditioned over there. So anything that's bought and that's purchased or taken in trade goes over there for reconditioning. It's over there for a short period of time, a matter of days, and then it goes back over to our lot, or it's wholesale. So it would be... There would be no difference to parking, there would be no change to parking. The only difference would be the customer arriving with the vehicle to be inspected. It's about a half-hour process.
Yeah, because you're saying you need 40 to 60 spaces.
That must be confusing.
This is your narrative, this is not my narrative. Approximately 40 to 60 spaces per month.
Including the... Including the... Inside the bays where the vehicles are being worked on, where they're being stored and cleaned, and there's sufficient space. There's 30, I think, 33 spots right there, and then plus the cleanup shop, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions from the commission? I have a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Commissioner Holinsky, go ahead.
I have a question.
Go ahead, you go for me, please. Go ahead.
I have a comment, I guess. I travel to the post office quite often, and I notice quite a lot of people crossing the street from Gail Toyota over to the Firestone area where your other facility is. And I'm just concerned that that's a safety issue. I mean, they're kind of picking their way across to the stop sign, four corners there where you go into the post office or either to Gail Toyota. And it's a mix of people. Some of them are dressed in ties, and I assume they're salesmen or managers, and others are... Look like they're workers, mechanics, those type of people. And I'm just wondering if we shouldn't try to consider having some kind of safety crosswalk there in that area. I know it's not... There's not a lot of speed there, but it gets pretty busy at times. And I've seen people crossing there quite, you know, at different times of the day, early morning time, later in the day, and so on. So I just... I just have a safety concern about that.
I can't disagree with that. I mean, that's... It's a... Yeah, we've had a few incidents over the years. People run that stop sign, so...
So I'm not sure... Do you feel you remember the planning and zoning, but I'm not sure how we would recommend that that happens, or get it from some agency that I could maybe take a look at.
Okay.
Good. Do you want to respond to that, or...
Would that be directly related to this approval here, or disapproval, or...
Could be.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yep. Commissioner Alamo?
Yeah, on that safety issue, Mr. Holinsky brought up, it looks like traffic, police officer approved. No detail behind it, just says approved. I don't see any report with it, but...
I mean, that's one...
Sheriff, does that answer our question for the safety?
I would just say that I think the traffic officer's comment is relative to vehicular traffic, so he probably did not see any conflicts relative to vehicle trips generated, or what he might have assumed would be generated by it. So I don't think his comment has any relevance to the pedestrian concern that you have. Some members have.
Ultimately, the...
Thank you.
You know, we'll do business there, would reduce the amount of traffic going across the street, too, so... Because right now, there's a lot of running back and forth, because we do have staff over there, so...
Mr. Chair, I have a comment. With respect to that, can we put a referral into the traffic safety officer to request that a pedestrian walk be put across there, you know, painted hashed walkway? Because that, I believe, is not there now, right? There's no crossing there.
No.
So if you put that walkway there, I think if, you know, that's probably a function of the town, because I see it, too. I'm at the post office every day, and I'm not saying it's your traffic. I think that there's some, all kinds of pedestrian traffic crossing there, whatever it may be, people who are waiting and so forth. But I think it'd be a good idea to make a referral, if it's possible, to the Traffic Safety or DPW to do that. I see them painting, repainting them all over town right now, all up and down Elm Street and so forth. But I'm not suggesting to make it a condition of approval, but if it's something that we can do as a referral, and I'm sure that they'll have no problem with that.
Yeah, we could certainly alert them to the commission's concern and the possible need for one.
Also, with respect to this application, I believe what's driving it is the motor vehicle department needs approval from Planning and Zoning for you to operate, or for you to get a license on that location. Is that... Is that what I understand?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah. Because to sell used cars, you need a license, is that correct? From the state or DMV?
Yeah, that's the kind of... The wedge we're kind of dropped into, I believe, yeah.
Right, okay. So, and I believe there's some additional information, according to your... According to staff comments, that we're still waiting for.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So basically, based on... Did you want to respond, or...
Well, I think the point relative to DMV is really, that's the gist of it. The area is clearly automotive-oriented. I think it was intended to be automotive-oriented from the get-go. So the use in a land use, you know, context isn't really a concern, notwithstanding concerns about kind of pedestrian traffic between 50 and 33, which we'll take a look at. But I don't think we've really answered the question about BuyCenter versus Gail.
Right.
I'm still unclear on that, and I think it's easily resolved. And the purpose, I think, of tonight was to get that resolved, so that we could move on and draft a motion and have these board members approve it. You can go on and BuyCenter can do what they're doing. When BuyCenter buys cars, they sell them?
They would wholesale them, or... I mean, it's Gail Toyota that's buying, the check from Gail Toyota.
Okay. When BuyCenter sells the cars, BuyCenter is selling the cars. BuyCenter needs a DMV approval to sell the cars, right? Yes or no? This came to us by way of an enforcement action.
Yeah.
By the ZEO. So that's why we're here, so we're just trying to figure it out, so we can get... Move forward and get on to other things.
It's Gail's BuyCenter. It's Gail's BuyCenter of Enfield, that's really what the actual... The sign.
So the problem with that is DMV is, we understand it, and we can try to get more information. But as I understand it, what Rick is saying, that the DMV is saying, is that BuyCenter can't do that at 33 under your licenses that come at 50. So that's the rub. So I'm not sure that this board or the staff here or Rick can resolve that for you. I don't think anyone really has an issue, Gail, BuyCenter, Johnny Bob Sally, selling cars at 33. It's all automotive, so this is unfortunately kind of the sticking point that we need to get past.
Okay.
So how do we do that? I was going to write the approval with conditions that the plan that was submitted be modified to label the unit BuyCenter, not Gail.
Okay.
Okay? And that the approval be issued in the name of BuyCenter specifically, exclusively, so that we can resolve the issues with ZBA, so that they'll actually sign the site plan, so you can get the K-7, and BuyCenter can go do what they want. That's what I was going to do.
Okay.
I didn't want to do that, and then have some pushback that, why did you do that that way? We don't want to do that. So I'd rather have some kind of consensus about that, if we can do that.
If that's the... I mean, it sounds like that might be the best...
It sounds like the only thing DMV is going to let us do.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
All right, so that's all I wanted to do. So if you have more questions, by all means, ask questions. I'm satisfied now that I can write something for you, come back in two weeks, whenever the next meeting is.
Thank you, because I was, I was going to lead into that, so you got to where you got to, so thank you. That answered all, I was just going to be the lead man, point man on that, so that all got straight to you, so you understand our predicament.
Okay.
So if you have a second, Mr. Higley?
Now I'm, now I'm confused. If it's Bi-Center across the street from Gale, can Bi-Center sell their cars under the seller's name at Gale's?
No, Bi-Center would have a separate K-7, a separate DMV approval, a separate bond for DMV, separate, everything with DMV. What Bi-Center does at that point, who they sell them to, for what the arrangement is, not sure that we really care.
So it's okay for them to sell at Gale Toyota?
No, well, what they're going to do is, they're going to sell as Bi-Center, and they're going to have a used car sales license for 33 for Bi-Center.
Okay, and you're okay with that? So you won't be selling at Gale's?
Well, he could sell, he could resale.
But under his name, he will not be selling at Gale's, right?
Bi-Center.
Bi-Center.
Bi-Center is going to be a 33.
Right, so you won't be selling at Gale's, correct?
Not directly, no, yeah.
Pardon me?
No. We'll be selling to Gale at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
Okay, we all?
Yep.
Cool, all good?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just to clarify now, the Bi-Center is a separate entity, which will be getting approval, which will also be getting the license. It's a separate entity, that you're going to have your own separate company, insurances and so forth, so, just so that you, I mean, you understand that, correct?
Yeah, I do, if that's, that's the way, it seems like that's the way it has to be, so.
Yeah, it'll be two separate entities and entirely different.
So I would suggest, just procedurally, that we leave the hearing open, come back in two weeks, we'll wrap it up. You'll have the draft for it, you can give me a call, and, okay?
All right.
Do we want to hear from any?
Or public, I don't know.
You can stay right there for a second. Any other questions for the applicant at this point? We're going to, but is there anyone in the public that would like to come up and speak for or against this application? Is there anyone in the public that would like to come up and speak for or against this application? Is there anyone in the public that would like to come up and speak for or against this application? Okay, thank you. I think we're done with the questions. I think everyone understood the game plan, so at this point in time, we want to leave this public hearing open, and I think we just want to, I guess, for the record, we want to table it and move on until the next meeting, so they can rectify the situations here.
June 9th.
June 9th.
June 9th.
So is there a motion to table this public hearing?
I move, we table the public hearing to the June 9th meeting.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, seconded by Secretary Petronella. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, somebody saying aye.
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 Thank you, Commissioner Holinsky. Let the record show that unanimous seven, nothing, we are tabling, keeping this public hearing open, but tabling it to the next meeting. Let you work with the staff to get this rectified, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for coming up.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone. We'll move on to the next one, whenever the secretary's record, ready? That's PH 3038.
Yes, Mr. Chair. The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings at the regular meeting on Thursday, May 26, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers at 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public hearing number 3034 MA, 1706 King Street, zone change request from BG to I-1 Josh Sullivan, applicant Burlington Coat Factory Warehouse Corporation.
No, sorry, wrong one.
Mayfield.
Mayfield, oh, we're on Mayfield?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Oh, this was read last. Well, I read it in last, so the public hearing is still open?
Yeah.
Do we have to read it again to open it? Okay.
Yeah, they were supposed to attend the last meeting, couldn't attend for some reason, so we bumped it up.
So we have Mayfield. Do we need to make a motion to take that off the table, or just?
No.
No, nope. Okay. Please identify yourself for the record.
Good evening. My name is Tim Coon. I'm a professional engineer with J.R. Russo and Associates, here tonight representing Mayfield Place LLC, along with Lou Gilman, who's in the audience, if there's any questions. We are here requesting a modification to allow a solid vinyl fence to replace the earthen berm along the common property line with Dartmoor. Now, we did submit a site plan, which shows that common property line, unfortunately, my easel, somebody must have bent the leg because I can't open one of them, so I can put it up so at least you can see it from this table. And then if anybody in the public wants to see it, we can turn it to show them later, but as you're probably all aware, Mayfield Place is a 340-unit apartment complex on 70 acres at the intersection of Mayfield Drive and North Maple Street. This apartment complex was approved by Planning and Zoning with special use permit in 2013, and it is nearing completion. But one thing in the approval that was included in the site plan was that there was to be a berm that ran along the property line, the common property line with Dartmoor, which is here to the east, this being the Mayfield Place development. And that berm was going to be like a four-foot-high landscape berm to provide screening. Recently, the owner met with representatives of Dartmoor to discuss substituting a six-foot-high solid fence to replace the berm. And they agreed that the fence is acceptable, as long as it is maintained in perpetuity, and a copy of that agreement, signed by the president of the Dartmoor Homeowners Association, was submitted with the package that I believe you received. So the fence actually has already been installed. I don't know if anybody's been out there. I did provide photographs showing the fence. It extends from the back of the property about 400 feet down to around the midway of this last unit. And you will notice, if you were out there, that this whole area is wooded, that really the only Dartmoor unit that is nearby is located up here. And compliments of Google Earth, I did, I was actually able to find an aerial photograph from May of 2021, this is the most recent one I could find, but you can see the Enfield development, as well as Dartmoor, and along with the nearest units of Dartmoor. So this is the location of the fence to replace the berm. We did receive a copy of the staff comments, where they did indicate that staff has no concerns with this application, but they did stipulate two conditions, one being that they'd like to see the fence extended an additional 175 feet, and the second being that the fence be maintained in perpetuity. And the applicant has no problem with the second one. However, we would prefer not to have to extend the fence, so we would like the first one eliminated. And as you can see from the aerial photograph, extending the 175-foot further toward Mayfield Drive is really along an area where there is over about 275 feet of dense forest between us and the nearest, actually, and the driveway before Dartmoor, not even the nearest units on the other side. So this, it is heavily wooded. You can see from the photographs, I have other photographs that Lou took today, the photographs that I took were taken in the winter. But the, really, we feel that this, the existing trees already provide a sufficient buffer and screening to the Dartmoor residences, and we would feel that this extension of the fence is not necessary, and we would just ask that that condition be eliminated. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions from the commission? Commissioner DeGray?
I did go to this site twice. Couple of weeks ago, trees weren't completely full-blown, went into Dartmouth, whatever they call it, Dartmore, and could see, actually, through the trees, because there wasn't that many leaves. And then I went again this week, and now the trees are in full foliage. And you're right, you can't see. But during the winter months, and we do have six, seven months of winter in New England, whether we like it or not, those people in those condos closer to the main road would be able to see. So I really don't feel that we should take out that 175-foot extension of the fence, only because of privacy in that area. That's all.
Thank you. I tend to concur with Commissioner DeGray. I mean, basically, you know, you guys have been, this company's been very good neighbors and good partners here in Enfield, no doubt about it, so I certainly want to bring that point up. You guys have been great. But I do tend to agree with you about the fence. I think it should be extended, all the way as staff has recommended. You know, you gave a nice presentation and a good pitch for it. Thank you. I do, I have no problem at this point, but I do want the conditions to stay, and that's just my personal opinion.
Yeah, I agree.
Any other, any questions? Commissioner Sherlaimo?
So the point that you brought up about not extending the fence, is there some circumstances to put the fence in? Topography, the ground, is there not nice digging? Why would you not want to do it? I guess I want to ask.
Well, frankly, I believe it's just a belief that it's an unnecessary expense, because it doesn't provide much benefit as far as the screening goes.
So it's more a monotarial thing, it's nothing to do with the ground or actually installing the fence? Thank you.
Commissioner Petronella?
Is it my understanding that where that 175 feet is, originally, there was a berm there?
The berm did extend the additional 175 feet on the approved plan, correct?
Right, so you're deleting the berm, and you're proposing, you're suggesting to put nothing back in that place, or to not put the fence in there, in lieu of the berm. So I would have to concur with Commissioner DeGray about, I think the fence should be extended per the staff recommendations.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Holinsky?
I also concur with Commissioner DeGray's comments about extending the fence. I'd be in favor of extending the fence.
Hey, thank you very much. Sina, I'm just going to see if there's any public would like to speak. Is there anyone in the public that would like to, could you do me a favor? Yeah, thank you very much. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak for or against this application? Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak for or against this application? Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak for or against this application? Sina, do staff have any comments they like that, other than what they mentioned in the packet?
No, but I think you picked up on the salient point, which was that the reason I included that condition, I didn't think about the seasonal issues, which I think is an excellent point, very relevant, but the reason I include that was that the original plan had the berm extending for that, that distance. So they could have asked for a different modification. They could have asked to, to get to Commissioner Petronella's point, they could have asked to eliminate that section of the berm and no fence in that, but that's not really what they asked for. The other part that I just want to note is that I'm not sure what Dartmoor and this group agreed to, or didn't agree to, or what their expectations were, or understandings, and I didn't want to, you know, do something or suggest something that would get us in the middle.
Totally understood.
So that's all.
Thank you. Yep, Commissioner Sherlaimo?
So the berm was going to be put up, it's not up yet.
Correct. The modification is to eliminate the berm and just put up the fence.
But in 170, and a part in question, 175 feet?
Would have, yeah.
Would have nothing.
Correct.
So the fence is less expensive than a berm. If you're going to put a four-foot-high berm, if it's a monotarial thing, I think the fence would look nicer as well. Fence would look nicer.
I believe the application was to, for the fence as it is shown on the plan, which is the fence that exists there now, to replace all of the berm.
Thank you.
Any more questions from the commission? Sina, is there a motion to close this public hearing?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Higley, seconded by Commissioner DeGray to close the public hearing. All those in favor, sitting by by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Holinsky, motion to approve?
So moved.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve public hearing number 3038 370 North Maple Road, modification of the approved site plan and special permit number 2781 to allow substitution of a vinyl fence for the required landscape berm along the easterly property line, Mayfield Place LLC, owner, applicant, MAP 78, Lot 30, with the 18 conditions listed.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner DeGray. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, whenever you're ready, Mr. Secretary, roll call.
Yes, Lou Fiore.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Francis Sherlaimo.
Four.
Ken Holinsky.
Four.
Christian D'Antonio.
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
Thank you. Let the record show unanimous seven to nothing to accept that, and that application with the conditions. Okay, seems like everyone's getting ready. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Secretary, now we'll move on to PH 3034 MA.
I forget that one memorized.
Yeah.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearing at the regular meeting on Thursday, May 26, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following applications. Public hearing number 3034 MA, 1706 King Street, zone change request from BG to I-1 Josh Sullivan, applicant Burlington Coat Factory Warehouse Corporations, owner, MAP 14, Lot 26 BG Zone.
Thank you. Is the applicant a representative here?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm attorney Thomas Fahey. I have an office in Windsor Locks at 487 Spring Street, and I represent the applicant this evening, which is True Storage, and present with me this evening is Jason, we met, who's a project engineer, and Emil Bouzier, who's a part of the ownership team, part of the contract opportunity, and also an attorney. We're here tonight, obviously, to talk about a change of zone application. Couple of housekeeping things to just put on the record is, the sign for this public hearing has been on King Street for well more than 10 days. I'm sure if you've driven up and down, you've seen it. And we made, because the property is bifurcated between the town of East Windsor and Enfield, we made, in fact, I talked to Matt about this, we made sure that the sign was on the Enfield portion of the property. And, well, I noticed in the record that you've got the CROG report in, and they didn't have any opposition to the change zone application. And I noticed also there was a record of the notice to the town of East Windsor, which you're required to do by statute, because it's within 500 feet. And could someone put the, I understand, yeah?
Can you just go to the file icon? Someone just say that? On the bottom.
You think I can see that far? I'm old now.
Of course, I can't see that far without my glasses.
I guess.
Commissioner Holinsky, once he brings his PowerPoint presentation up, I won't be able to see you anymore, but I can verbally still hear you, okay?
Okay.
New Jose's?
Yeah.
Couldn't tell by the results, sir.
It's exactly like I'm doing.
Oh, now what I'm hearing? Don't leave it, I can't read that. So what am I hitting here?
Right there.
Right there?
Yeah.
No. No, that's the wrong one.
I believe it's the third one.
Nope. Oh, is it below that, or?
It's above that one.
Come on, baby. There we go. Okay. Now.
There we go.
Okay, perfect, that's great. Next slide.
Thank you, Alex.
The property is in purple, okay? The property we're talking about this evening is right here, 1706 King, and as I said, the town line is right here, I'm pointing with the southern boundary of the Enfield piece. And this drive that, and by the way, this property, most of you probably remembered is, was known as the Cohoes Commons. It's more, it was developed more than 40 years ago. And interestingly, it was developed in both in East Windsor and Enfield by variances, that both towns gave them variances to operate Cohoes, which was basically a clothing, I don't know if you'd call it, it was not really wholesale, it was more like a, I'd call it kind of on a higher-end retail clothing store. The building was actually built, this, this line, if those of you have seen the plans, actually goes right through the building. So the building is built both on, in East Windsor and in Enfield. The road, the main entrance, though, is Prospect Hill Terrace there, which is actually in East Windsor. And we actually have another application pending before the town of East Windsor for a special, I'm sorry, site plan approval. Now, this process started, I approached, I think I talked to Lori first, and we went in for administrative review team hearing, which was, I believe Jason was there, and it was very helpful, because that all of the members of the ART team got to ask questions regarding everything from fire sprinklers to the nature of the use. And the consensus of that meeting was that the, there was support for the use, which after Burlington left, they left because, based upon my research and understanding, is that the retail market, it wasn't working for retail any longer, I think for a lot of reasons, and that's the least of which. of reasons, and that's the least of which, was that the whole nature of retail is much more online today. And as you all know, they moved to a different location, and this building is now empty. It's an ideal site for what the True Storage people want to do, because they don't have to make any changes whatsoever to the, at this point, to the exterior of the building, because they're going to do air-conditioned and completely indoor storage. So the reason this is in purple is because if you look at your plan of development, they have this area, have had for a number of years now. The most recent plan of development that I think Goman York did, I looked at it earlier this evening, had the same map as part of your future use plan, and the future use plan, all this has a big circle around it like this for this property to become, for the encouragement of industrial one uses. The use directly across the street is also industrial one. So while this is now a BG use, and a different color on your zoning map, it's our intent to bring it into an industrial one use where warehousing is a permitted use, and then proceed with our site plan application in June. With site plan application is in with all the details and traffic reports and all the things we require. So, and obviously, I believe in your packet is also the staff recommendation, which agrees that this is consistent with your plan of development. So the standard in Connecticut regarding zone changes for zoning commissions is that when time and experience reasonably indicates the need for revision, that's supportive of a change of zone. I think this is a perfect example of that, because you've all seen and lived through what's happened over 40 years on this particular site. Now, I have, I don't, we didn't have any plans for our project engineer to speak tonight with a formal presentation, because that's probably more of a site plan thing than it's a change of zone, but they're, both he and Emile are prepared to answer any questions you have along with me.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Attorney Fahey. Any questions from the commission? Commissioner D'Antonio?
Yeah, I mean, looking at the map with the proposed changes, not on the applicant's property, but there's a state of Connecticut property. I thought I saw it mentioned somewhere as DOT. Do we have more clarification on that property? Because the proposal is to keep that little sliver of land zone for BG, so I'm wondering if there's any potential to just clean up the zoning for consistency. Can they operate out of an I-1 zone? But, yeah, so I guess firstly, what is a state of Connecticut property there?
Well, I guess, couple of different answers. Yes, the town could rezonate the state piece. It would be really of no material benefit because it's owned by the state. So the state is, you know, they have superior authority over municipal zoning, so we could zone it whatever we'd want, and they could effectively do whatever they wanted. It really wouldn't matter. So it's kind of this vestigial, landlocked piece. I don't know the history of it, how it got there, what it's, I'm not even sure if it's used for anything at all. It may even be something that the state might want to dispose of at some point in time, not sure. But, you know, we could rezonate, but it wouldn't really be of any particular benefit to anyone.
So state trumps any town zoning? So they could put anything they want there? So, and I don't know the history of that site either.
Yeah, well, I mean, if that's the case, then, I mean, what, I mean, just for the sake of like, clean, like, the whole point of this, besides the applicant coming in here is to update the zoning map to reflect the more industrial area. I mean, if we could do that without any repercussions for the state.
Yeah, no, I guess.
And then that area will be zoned industrial for the future if the state ever.
Well, only anyone that objects to doing that, the scope of this particular application was obviously their interest in the Burlington piece, so they weren't, I don't think, in any position to do that. When, as we do the POCD and as we kind of do reg and map amendments as a follow-up to the POCD, that's certainly something that we could, we could do easily. I don't think the state would object.
Okay.
And don't forget that thought. Move forward over the rest of the year on those other items, we can tackle that issue at that point.
Mr. Chair, just for.
Commissioner Lyman?
Mr. D'Antonio, I think, and I don't know 100%, but when 91 was constructed, you'll see a few of these along the roadway in Enfield, because there was going to be rest areas.
Right.
And that might be what those are. I know there's a few more, actually one over by you, where you live. It could be. They just, it's been like that forever, and it's just there. So I think, not 100%, but just to give you a little background.
A piece of history.
Yeah, a piece of history. There's a few of them.
Let's get back to this app. So any other questions for this applicant at this point?
Can I just respond to that?
Yep, go ahead.
If that was something that the town wanted to follow up, I don't think you could do it with this application, because.
Right, right.
There hasn't been any notice to the state and have to be separately notified.
Absolutely, totally agree. Thank you. Any questions for this applicant at this point? Seeing none, is there anyone in the public who would like to speak for or against this application? Is there anyone in the public who'd like to speak for or against this application? Last time, anyone like to speak for or against this application? Seeing none, does staff have anything else they want to add to this particular application?
No, it's consistent with POCD, current POCD, presumably the future POCD, and we did include, I think, an effective date recommendation and some findings, if you will.
Yep, yep. I would tend to concur, this is definitely in conjunction with our current POCD, and I would anticipate with the new updated one that's going to be coming out this year. So this certainly is compliant with that. Seems like commission questions are done, hearing that. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, seconded by Commissioner Lyman, to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Let the record show. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Holinsky. So Alex, could you come on back in so we can get this display off, so we can get Commissioner Holinsky? There we go.
There he is.
There he is, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission.
Yeah, don't go away, we're not quite done yet.
Okay.
Thank you very much. So public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve public hearing number 3034 MA, 1706 King Street, zoning map amendment from BG to I-1 Josh Sullivan, applicant Burlington Co Factory Warehouse Corporation, owner, map 14, lot 26, with, I see no conditions.
No conditions, but there's a finding in effect.
With no conditions.
Okay, is there a second?
Seconded by Commissioner Holinsky.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Lou Fiore.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Francis Alamo.
Four.
Ken Holinsky.
Four.
Christian D'Antonio.
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
And just for the record, the finding will be, the commission finds that this application is consistent with the current POCD, and will implement the commission's adopted land use plan recommendations for this area, and the effective date of this will be 8:30 a.m. Thursday, June 9. Thank you, you're all set?
Thank you very much.
Yep. We're just going to recess for five minutes, just for a break for people with allergies. We'll be right back.
We call this meeting back to order. Thank you, everyone, for the quick recess. Let's give Alex a second here to make sure he's on with us. Mr. Secretary, we will now go to PH 3041.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah. Enfield Planning and zoning commission will hold public hearings at the regular meeting on Thursday, May 26, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut concerning the following application. Public hearing number 3041, 98 Prospect Street, application for outdoor storage. David Weeks, town of Enfield owner, map 21, lot 20, I-1 zone.
Thank you. The applicant or representative, please come forward, identify themselves for the record. And I believe the mic was probably still left on.
Yeah, it's still on. My name is David Weeks. I work for Kellyford Lumber, which is 92 Prospect Street. I live in East Long Meadow, 56 Fields Drive, and I've lived there for the last two years.
Okay. Thank you. Could you briefly describe, yeah, the application?
What we have here, do, does everybody have a map of this? I believe you do. What we'd like to do here is to have outside storage on this piece of property. It's approximately 30, 35,000 square feet, which is less than an acre. And we want to put outside storage on this thing because it's a brown's field. Does everybody understand it's a brown's field piece of property? And it's contaminated. And we had to come up with a plan so that the town would approve, the Titan Bond actually would look at, that these people looked at, and that they can go ahead and clean the piece of property up, and then we would take title to it and do whatever we have to do to make this happen, which is paving and encapsulating the bad soil, drainage, which instead of bringing the water to the rear, will bring the water to the front into the sanitary, not the sanitary sewer, the storm sewers.
Right, right.
And it drops off quite a bit, so that's why you have in the back here. It drops off quite a bit. So it has to be approved so we can buy it and so we can clean it up and move forward. Any questions, though?
Questions from the commission?
We've all seen that. It's an ugly piece of property. And we're gonna, we're gonna try to clean, we're definitely gonna, we're gonna put a fence in front so it'll be very safe and whatnot.
Just a comment. I'm very familiar with that piece of land and dealt with it for many years, as you know.
Remember when it burnt down?
Yeah, I do. And I'm happy to see something being done with it. That's my comment.
Just out of curiosity, just from my own, with my own historical, was that where the oil company used to be?
Yeah. Used to be, Airetti?
Yeah, Airetti's Oil.
Yeah, there was a bunch of gas pumps there for years.
Then it became, there's stuff in the ground there that we don't want to talk about.
No. I'm glad to see this moving forward. This has been a headache for a long time. In my other life, I had to deal with this.
You were there.
Yes.
Many times.
Many times, yes.
Any other questions, Commissioner Petronella?
Yeah, I assume storage is gonna be lumber, outside lumber and...
It could be shingles, tracks, lumber, you know, and most of it will be paved. And we'll be encapsulating most of the lousy soil. And any, the soil in the back will have to be good.
Yep.
And the rainwater now is going forward rather than back.
Backward.
Also, does this fall into that, this is industrial property, and this will fall into that new storage, outside storage, so they got 50% or I think is what we agreed to?
Yeah, there were also multiple variances that were issued by the DBA.
Saw the variances.
To accommodate this.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, yeah, okay.
So this is town-owned currently, and we as staff have been working with the organization to develop the remediation action plan for cleanup. So that's going to be funded through another source. But we don't want to take ownership of the property, and it was next to Kellyford debt, and so we spoke with Mr. Weeks.
I have a first-hand sale agreement with you people.
Yes, right. So we've been working on this for years, literally. I mean, since, almost since before I started, which was almost four years ago. So we're finally at this point, so.
And it borders our piece.
Yep.
And it just makes sense. No one else is really gonna want to be able, no one else could really do anything there.
Right.
So it just, it makes sense to just have Kellyford expand into the area for more outside storage.
All set, John? Commissioner D'Antonio?
Yep, I just wanted to clarify, what percentage do you have an idea of how much is gonna be paved? Is it the entire area?
Probably close to 80, 90%, because it drops off in the back, that will be grass. That will be whatever.
The original remediation action plan actually called for the entire site to be paved, but they backed off on that a little bit, I think, by removing some soils. Yeah, so.
But I would say 80, 85%. We would like to pave the whole thing, but because it drops, you know, because we need the space, and that space we won't be able to use, but it'd be grass or whatever it has to be.
And that's the space that drops off towards the railroad tracks.
Towards the railroad tracks, that's the, right. And one thing the town engineer says, since we're moving 80% of the water back, and it's not going that way anymore.
Right, right. That's improvement itself.
It's improvement.
Yep. Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yep, Commissioner Hilskey, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Weeks, are you confident that the remediation plan is going to cap the facility properly so that it will be safe for your employees to work there? And would there be a need for them to wear any kind of protective equipment or anything while they're working?
That's a good question. She can help me answer this, but Titan Bond oversees this. The town hires somebody, and then Titan Bond will oversee what they do there. Am I saying this correctly?
That is correct.
And we will never be able to dig in that again. We'll never be able to put a building up in there. I mean, you've just, because it's, the state will be monitoring this anyway.
Right.
So it's...
Yeah, I'm concerned that there, you know, there might be some residual outgassing from materials or something like that. I know they usually do a pretty good job capping that.
I would say they would, they would know when they get in there what they have to do.
Yeah, Titan Bond will make sure that this is...
You've heard of Titan Bond. They're very good at what they do.
So that's what they do. They do brownfields, enclosures, of that nature.
We just don't level it and pave over it. They have to, they have to prepare it.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, they're also going to have to remove a lot of material.
Right.
So, and until they start digging, they won't know exactly what they have to remove, but it will be relatively, you know, this plan will remain as is. They might have to bring in more fill in order to do it, but it will be a safe site provided it's not dug into, which was the other reason that Mr. Weeks actually wanted to have a structure there, and that started getting complicated, having footings and posts and whatnot into the ground, so.
Because it's a small site.
Yeah, so that's why we decided just outdoor storage.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Any questions? Is there any, is there anyone here in the public that'd like to speak for or against this application? Is there anyone in the public that'd like to speak for or against this application? Anyone in the public that'd like to speak for or against this application? Seeing none, staff, like to add any more comments to this?
The only thing I would say is that just, and I put this in the memo, I just wanted to put a fine point on it, is that you have nothing to do with the remediation, you're not approving the remediation plan, that's not your scope. You're approving, just assume that this is a plan for storage, pro forma, that kind of thing. Other people and parties will be responsible for all the remediation part of it, so that's all.
And the town still owns it.
Yes, it's just for the outdoor storage.
And this way, we could get it back onto the tax rolls.
Yep, keep this project moving.
Yep.
Absolutely. Any more questions from staff? Seeing none, entertain a motion to close this public hearing. Motion made by Commissioner DeGray, seconded by Commissioner Higley to close this public hearing. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Thank you, Mr. Malinski. Let the record show it was unanimous, seven, nothing to close a public hearing. Make a motion to approve?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve public hearing number 3041, application for site plan approval for outdoor storage at 98 Prospect Street. David Weeks, DBA, Kellyford Lumber applicant, town of Enfield owner, map 21, lot 20, I-1 zone, per the reference plans and other, and other application support documentations and the 28 conditions listed.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeGray, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mr. Secretary, whenever you're ready for roll call vote.
Lou Fiore?
Four.
Linda DeGray?
Four.
Virginia Higley?
Four.
Francis Alamo?
Four.
Ken Hylinsky?
Four.
Christian D'Antonio?
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
Let the record show it's unanimous, seven, nothing. Mr. Weeks, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Give him a second here to get collected here.
That was a good question to ask, whether it's gonna be...
Whenever you're ready, Mr. Secretary, I'll put your map away.
What we got now?
Okay. We're now, yes, you're right. Now we're on to new business. Site plan review, 1891 Nine Moody Road, Unit 3A, application for fabrication facility and window wraps for vehicles. Sean Mayo, applicant Anderson Properties LLC owner, map 75, lot 36, I-1 zone. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. Please identify yourself for the record.
I'm Sean Mayo, resident Enfield, 14 Post Road.
Thank you. Could you, hold on.
Someone having tea?
Ken, are you boiling water?
No, I wonder if it's in here.
Almost sounds like somebody's vehicle.
Oh.
He's just doing this.
Oh.
It's a bug. Hold on, I gotta reconnect the meeting.
We're just gonna take a quick recess.
No, no, it'll take us a second.
Okay.
It's gonna reconnect it.
Good thing you're here. You always come to the rescue. Good thing he's here.
There we go. No, it wasn't you, Ken.
We gotta get him some roller skates.
My luck throwing everybody off their game, right?
Mr. Mayo, please start again. We had a little, almost sounded like a bug, didn't it?
I'm Sean Mayo, resident Enfield, I live at 14 Post Road.
Can you just describe your application, why you're here tonight?
I'm filing for application on a site plan for fabrication on my window tint and vinyl wrap shop with accessory use for retail sales.
Okay. Is there any, any questions for this application?
I just have one.
Go ahead.
I just have one. Are you the only employee, is it owner operated?
Yep.
I was just wondering if there was gonna be expansion?
In the future, I would, I would like to be able to hire people on, because as a one-man shop in my industry, it's definitely pretty stressful. You could ask my girl that. But at the time, I might have a friend of mine that helps me out on some crazy days, but other than that, I don't have any other employees.
Okay, because I was over there, and I just saw the one bay, and that's why I was like, how many?
Yeah, I could fit two cars in there at a time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it is just me. When I am vinyl wrapping a car, I have the car for about two weeks, so I have, the bay goes at an angle, so I'm able to put one car in there to stay and then continue with daily jobs, pulling them in and out.
You just, I didn't realize it took two weeks. I thought it was like a one-day deal.
Oh, to wrap a car is a lot of work.
All right, thank you.
Definitely, yeah.
If I may have the privilege of the chair to go next, if I may, if you guys don't mind. I just want to go through a couple of things with you so that we're clear. The retail sale of products not directly related to the permissible industrial use, these products cannot be offered for sale or sold from this location. So there will be some things you won't be able to sell there.
Yeah, that, I wasn't sure regarding, like, I do also, I install remote starters and at the same time, fabricating wiring harnesses and...
We'll go through some of them.
Okay.
Just want to make sure you're clear and on board here. If we approve this, some of the conditions that are in there.
Yeah, okay.
The site plan approval shall expressly exclude the display and retail sale of any products not fabricated on the site. So you will not be allowed to sell products that are not fabricated on the site.
That being like?
Starters.
Trailer hitch?
Yeah, you're not making them on the site.
Okay.
You can't sell them. The retail display and sale of any products fabricated shall be limited to, well, I'm not gonna go through the whole section. All use to shall occur within the interior of the unit. You won't be able to do any work outside.
That's fine. Dust control.
Yeah, shall be responsible, secure additional, you know, that, we know that's standard stuff. Yeah, that's pretty much, pretty much why I wanted to go first. I just wanted to make sure you clearly understand that.
All right.
Is there any questions for the applicant? Staff have any, anyone to add?
No, this came to our attention by reg.
Yeah.
And so this is kind of a, call it a cleanup.
Yeah.
Type of situation. So we apologize about the retail limitations, but that's how the reg is written currently. Maybe in the future, can't promise anything, there may be some amendments that might kind of expand that in some way.
Yeah, I was trying to find any, I'm new to the whole this part of it, you know, I mean, I kick butt on entrepreneur classes, but, you know, we didn't cover stuff like this, you know? You know, I'm just glad Mr. Rochelli was actually quite helpful, you know?
Just a question. So when you vinyl wrap a car, you're wrapping it so it can be shipped to protect the car itself?
No, it's like color change or paint protection film. So if you got a black car that you want matte black, we would vinyl wrap the whole car to change the color of it, and then the customer goes, has to take it to DMV and have the registration changed, but that's all, that's them.
Wow, interesting.
Yeah, printed graphics, commercial trucks, so like landscape companies. I have a vinyl cutter, so we cut the graphics, their logos for it, you know, do it on their trailers and stuff like that.
Interesting. Thank you. Commissioner Higley?
I think this is really interesting. How long does it last when you vinyl wrap a car?
As long as you'd like it to. I usually recommend people to have it ceramic coated after, so then it lasts a lot longer. Usually they say it's easily removed three to five years, but as long as you maintain it and garage the vehicle, it could last you almost the life of a vehicle. Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think this is a good use of the area and the building and entrepreneurship. We're, you know, sponsoring that in a way, and, you know...
And I really appreciate the help, you know.
It's a good idea. I'm glad to hear the staff was helpful to you to keep this going, so.
Yeah, it got me pretty nervous.
Yeah.
You know, I never, you know, I was 10 years at On Point Connections before I started my own business, so it was, it was really scary when, you know, I get the letter in the mail, and I'm like, oh my God, I'm gonna lose everything I just worked so hard for, you know?
Yep, no. All right. Staff's all set? Secretary, make, since there's no questions, looking around here, secretary, make a motion to approve?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve SPR number 1891 Nine Moody Road, Unit 3A, site plan application to allow fabrication and installation of vinyl film for automotive uses and signage, and including directly related subordinate accessory retail sales of materials permitted to be produced, fabricated on-site. Sean Mayo, DBA, Unique Wraps and Glass LLC applicant, Anderson Properties LLC owner, map 75, lot 36, I-1 zone, with the 22 conditions listed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, second by Commissioner Alamo this time. You beat him to it a bunch.
He's on a delay.
Yeah, he is. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, secretary, roll call vote whenever you're ready.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Lou Fiore?
Four.
Virginia Higley?
Four.
Linda DeGray?
Four.
Francis Alamo?
Four.
Kenneth Hylinsky?
Four.
Christian D'Antonio?
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
Let the record show it was unanimous, seven, nothing approval of this site plan review. You're all set with the conditions, and if you have any questions about those, I'm sure staff will, more than glad to help you with that.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with your business.
You have a great night.
Okay, site, we're on to the next, everyone's ready? Site plan review, 1892 53 Manning Road, application requesting approval for an indoor long-term parking facility. Walter Labonte, applicant, KBRC Realty LLC owner, map 32, lot 15, I-1 zone. Good evening. Identify yourself for the record, please.
I'm Walter Labonte. I'm also Chip Labonte. I've been here a few times, and I'm sure you guys are all familiar with the former Hallmark Building.
Yeah, and your address, please?
I'm sorry, the property's at 53 Manning Road.
Personal address, please?
I live in Sherburne, Massachusetts.
Hey, thank you.
I'm formerly from Springfield.
Thank you.
So I bought the Hallmark Building in 2010 and operated it as warehouse space for about 10 years. We were here in 2017 and got approval for port to be, change of use for a portion of the building as self-storage, and that was completed, I shouldn't say completed, approved, and we have partially completed the installation of self-storage units and we're working further on that. Unfortunately, we also had Brooks Brothers as a tenant, so I'm sure you're familiar with that. They left the building last, a year ago, November, with all the stuff inside it. You may have seen the article in the New York Times. So that left us in sort of a distressful situation. We were able to sell the building, and the sale, I think, was just finalized today, but it started over around May 6. I've supplied Ms. Witten with the deed of the property, which is currently owned now by a company in Las Vegas. They're called All Purpose Storage Enfield. And so I am a tenant in, for the second floor of the building. So if you are familiar with the building, I provided a photograph so that you could sort of get a sense that the second floor is certainly a second floor, but it is drive up on land, sort of like a barn, I mean, an old Yankee barn, in that you could drive up on one level. Shelton Brothers was formerly a beer importer. They were a tenant of ours. They also went out of business during COVID. And so part of the sale of the building has left me as a tenant on the second floor. So we have been trying to lease that portion of the building for a couple of years, and it's been sort of difficult because the building is somewhat obsolete with only the two overhead doors. That's only one part of the problem. The other part of the problem is the concerns about traffic on Manning Road. So I think there that we've done a really good job of mitigating the traffic, because the self-storage portion is really much more towards just consumer, I don't know if consumer is the right word, residential vehicles. There aren't nearly, there really isn't truck traffic for our building anymore. And that's, you know, I can't say that's 100% because sometimes somebody will have their moving truck, they move out of their house, then they move it into a self-storage unit. But that's not part of what I'm here to talk to you about today. You know, I wanted to tell you that first and foremost, that this idea of using long-term parking, which essentially for one or three months and the like, you have a nice car, it's a summer car, and you want to get it off the road. It's to cater to that business, which evidently is growing, and we would like to use that second floor space simply for long-term parking, which I described in the narrative. You know, it's not, it's really somebody's gonna commit, drive down the street, we're going to park their car so they're not coming inside the building, and it's going to be there for one month, two months, three months, and then typically come out in March and the like. And it's as simple as that. We feel like it is the lowest traffic use. There are some issues there regarding upgrading the sprinkler system and the HVAC. We're going to either use a lift or a ramp to bring cars into the building, and it's really as simple as that. I think that I supplied you all with a site plan, which shows the easy access, that they are gonna drive through the large existing parking lot, and then a parking plan for inside the building.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. I'm reading. You're all set?
Well, that's as much as I can think of to say.
Okay.
We've had some, a number of preliminary engineering work done regarding the structural facility. I noticed that the building department had some concerns about that. I have letters from the original builders, engineers, and also something that was done in February confirming the building's ability to do that. I did have a fire, rather, a sprinkler engineer confirm that we do need to have the sprinklers replaced and to conform with the fire department or the fire safety, I'm not sure what, but anyways, they need to be replaced, and also that the HVAC system needs to be upgraded to deal with that. And so I think that we've addressed the situations. I've talked to the fire department a number of times and the building department. And so I hope there that we could do this with the, being a really low impact, in fact, the lowest impact use that we could possibly provide for the neighborhood. And also, we're looking to do a business as opposed to have a tenant, because it's been so difficult to lease that portion of the building.
Well, if I may, again, take the privilege to start, I know the building very well, having worked in that building for eight years of my life, upstairs and downstairs. By closing my eyes, I know exactly it upstairs, can walk it in my sleep. But having said that, we do have some comments here from the fire marshal, for instance, of that district, North Tonsil Fire Department, an additional fire hydrant needs to be installed, and the area on the north side has to be graded and made so the fire apparatus can go up and through the northeast corner of the gate. So there are some concerns on the fire marshal's part of that fire district. And you're right, the building department has pretty much held back a lot of their concerns until there's more inspections are done and things move along in order to get your certificate of occupancy, so I'm not even gonna mention that, because, you know, that's gonna come down the road. You've already mentioned things that you already have to do, like your HVAC system and a few other things, so. Sounds like from a monetary standpoint, you're gonna have quite a big investment to put this parking garage in place. One of my other concerns is, since I don't have any detail from you, is that would these automobiles and recreational vehicles stored there, would there be storage with gasoline still in their gasoline tanks?
No RVs.
No RVs, okay.
Just cars.
Just cars.
Yes.
Okay.
It's an interesting situation, and I'm just gonna defer to the fire department. And so I've heard two, I went to, the Big E does this, and I asked them about that, and evidently they prefer something like a third or a quarter tank of gasoline, and then I've talked to actual operators, and they want a full tank. And the reason being is... And the reason being is it's the vapor that is the danger, not the actual liquid. So whatever the Fire Department says is what we're going to make customers do.
Okay.
I mean, it's really, they tell us what to do, nobody cares.
Right.
We're just going to follow whatever they want.
Okay, well, thank you. Thanks for that information, too, that's good to know, thanks. Mr. Higley?
You said no RVs, but how about trucks and boats?
As I said in my narrative, absolutely no boats, and the reason about no boats is they're fiberglass or plastic, it's just, my sprinkler system can't handle it. So it's just a no-go from the get-go. I mean, in this area, in Connecticut River and all, you know, it'd be sort of interesting and nice, but it's an absolute no-go with my sprinkler system, so it's not possible. RVs, they're way too big. My doors are 10 feet. I might replace the door to get to 12 feet, but actually, I really can't even see doing that. I mean, it's possible just because they're obsolete, but RVs, no, they're also largely plastic.
Well, that would limit your size of trucks also, because bigger trucks wouldn't fit through your door.
It's not a truck business. It's really, you've got a nice car, it's a summer car, it's a, you know, it's a convertible, you're not, you don't want to drive it in the salt, and largely, it's like, for people who have a garage, they don't need it, but if they're, if they've, I've talked to an operator recently, he has a customer with eight cars. So he can't even, even if he had a two or a four-car garage at home, he doesn't have enough garage space. And if you're in a condo and have two cars and, you know, you don't have a garage or what, it's dealing with those people, it's a sort of a side business, it's a similar situation to self-storage where people have too much stuff, and they want to get their nice car off the road so it doesn't, you know, get affected by salt and even just the rain and sun during the winter.
Thank you.
Mr. Limo?
Yeah, so did you say you don't own the building anymore?
Nope.
So the farmer's market that we approved is not happening?
I wish it was. The town did their own, and as you recall, COVID was bad last fall when we tried to get started.
Okay, but it's still there?
No, we never started it.
The permit's still there? So it's not going to happen?
Not to my, I don't have any control over it.
So you're not the owner?
Right, and I'm not applying, I mean, that was...
I just remember your application, and we approved it, and it never happened.
Very disappointing that we put an awful lot of effort into it, and they do want it at the mall, and I don't even think they charge for it. And so we were hoping that we would be able to provide a better alternative, but COVID got really strong in the fall, and people weren't interested.
Right, okay. I was just curious, I remember the whole process, okay, thank you.
Mr. Hill?
Just a quick question, are you able or do you have the engineering, is that second floor going to hold all them, that's, all them cars?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, Mr. Fieri, you're, it's all...
Solid, solid cement.
Well, that's why I looked at you also, I mean, that's a lot of...
Yeah, solid cement, that, that was the original, original, outside of Central Street, Springfield Building, that's the original Hallmark Cars Warehouse on that second floor.
And it's still in the condition it was?
I haven't been there, I haven't been there 20 years, longer than that, but originally was in real good condition, and, you know, solid cement.
So in the course of selling the building, we had a buyer who actually fell through, who did some engineering on it, and they did an ART with the town, and they supplied the town with a letter from, I'm not sure how you pronounce this, Machi Engineers, which is dated February this year, that confirmed, you know, the stability or the, you know, the ability of the building to, for this use. And then I also have something going back from like 1966 from the original architect, where he provided the capacity, and I've talked to the building inspector, and he's good with it all.
Mr. Hill, say, anyone on this side first, or, Frank?
So just another question, so, a little bit on the logistics side of it, are people going to have free rein to go in and out?
Absolutely not.
They have to make an appointment, and somebody will be, right?
Yeah, so my intent, in part because I don't live locally, I may move here because, you know, to make this happen, is to be open like two days a week. I mean, it's, it's not a come-and-go business, we'll be open Saturdays because that's the one day that most everybody wants to come, and probably something, you know, like a Wednesday afternoon, come and drop off your car, come and pick up your car, you know, we're going to valet it.
Being monitored and facilitated by you, by somebody in charge?
Well, mostly electronically. We're not, I mean, obviously, nobody's coming in to do work on a car, you know, and people are encouraged, take your stuff, you know, take your tennis racket, take your keys, make sure you've got everything, because if we have to come back and do something for you, we're going to charge you. And it's just a basic thing, I mean...
I'm just looking at it from a safety perspective, we're, it's not going to be wide open for people to go in there and move cars and...
Oh, God, no, oh, God, no, absolutely not. And what's more is, there's a risk, you know, if your car is there, you don't want him walking around, you know, with a key, and no monkey business at all, they don't, you know, the public is not going to have free rein to go in there to do anything.
Okay, thank you, thank you for making that clear, thank you.
Any other question, Petrola?
Yeah, so you're not proposing, there's no, like, a full-time 24/7 security guard?
Electronically.
It'll all be electronically?
Yeah.
Okay, so there won't be anybody either there, staffed or full-time, or a small apartment living there to monitor everything?
It's pretty gross.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, not gross, but it's not, it's not residential.
Yeah, yeah, and there seems to be, this, this whole thing of, is this considered parking or storage? To me, it's storage, it's not parking. Is that how we're looking at this?
Yeah, it's, we, we in the department have been kind of vacillating back and forth on this, and, you know, if we consider it long-term parking, would that open up the window for other places to just have that? It certainly could be just considered storage of cars, and that could be it. That's not an issue at all. So I think you came in under the parking regulation, but I think that if we just called it storage of vehicles, that's long-term parking, storage, no problem either way. But the parking garages actually are not even a use listed in the use table in the business zones, it's just industrial.
Okay, thank you, and, yeah, the sprinkler system probably, there's going to be some issues with that, but that'll be taken care of in the permit, yes, as far as storage, yeah, these cars are actually lighter per square foot than storage by a lot. A car weighs, say, 4,000 pounds, in the same area, that building should be designed to handle about 12,000, 15,000 pounds, so there should be no issue there. Yeah, yeah.
But Ken, there used to be racks, there used to be racks, you know, why is that table going all the way up to the ceiling packed with cases and cases of Hallmark Cars items on that, on that floor? That whole length, that whole upper section.
And if it's paper, that's, can get real heavy.
Paper, yeah, it's all paper.
As well as pallets of beer.
Yeah, that's right, you have beer afterwards, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions?
The only question I have for you, if we are to approve this, it is a site plan approval, but yet I would like to have the North Tonsil Fire Marshal's comments in here. I know we can't really do conditions, per se, but he brings up some very good...
You certainly could have conditions, and I've actually supplied this evening, the revised memo with conditions and a motion, and I would certainly include the, we just got the Fire Marshal and Building Department comments this afternoon, like very late this afternoon, so I would just say...
And I think the building, building comments are pretty obvious, basically, his comments are at the end when, for the CO, during that process, but, but the Fire Marshals are different, so I would like to make a recommendation that we add conditions 18 and 19 to be at least the first two items that Fire Marshal Povantia mentions. An additional fire hydrant needs to be installed, and the area on North Street for the length of the two-story building has to be graded and made so the fire apparatus can go up through the northeast corner gate. Does anyone have any objections to that?
No.
Any more discussion?
So, Mr. Chair, the comments that we got this afternoon that are on our desk will be, because they're not in the, so it'll be added?
Yes, I just, these conditions will be...
That's what you were just reading. So do you want to include the building?
Yeah, because they're a separate document.
I mean, was there, is there...
We'll just do building, fire comments and building comments as, as we receive them today.
Because they're a separate document.
I'll include that in the motion.
Yeah, or you want to do that?
Might I make another suggestion, is that staff should review any grading plan, that, any grading that is going to be required, because the Fire Marshal does reference some...
Couldn't hear with the fire behind me, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, so make a recommendation that we actually, that staff has to review the grading plan that the Fire Marshal is recommending?
Sure.
I'm good with that, we'll add them in there.
Yeah.
Because our, it says pending on our paper, on our packet.
Yeah.
Our packet information says these two documents are pending.
Which we got, yeah.
So they were?
We got them.
Until this afternoon.
Until this afternoon, right. You and them lady meals.
That was that stat in front of you.
Oh, just to be, just so we make sure we have it in the record.
Absolutely, totally agree. Are you all set with that, Mr. Secretary, where we are?
Yeah.
Okay, yep, yep. Seeing that, is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve SPR 1892 53 Manning Road Site Plan Modification for the Addition of Long-Term Storage of Vehicles on the Second Floor of a Warehouse. Applicant, Walter Labonte, Owner, KRBC Realty in the I-1 Zone, MAP 34, Lot 15, with the 17 conditions listed, along with the Fire Marshal's conditions that dated 5/26/22, and the Building Department's review comments that is dated also 5/26/22.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Limo. Any discussion on this motion?
Sorry, Ken.
Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, roll call vote whenever you're ready, Mr. Secretary.
Lufiari.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Francis Alimo.
Four.
Ken Holinsky.
Four.
Christian D. Antonio.
Four.
And John Petronola is four.
The record show was unanimous, seven nothing with the conditions, good luck with this enterprise.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good night. There's no old business, so now we'll move on to other business. Any other businesses, discussion on size limits for warehouse distribution centers or large buildings, whatever you want to classify that to be. Is there any information that staff would like to pass out for us to start this discussion?
Are you a mind reader?
Yeah. I've been called that kind of time, and other things.
So Lou had sent an article regarding the Windsor regulations, that was in Monday's JI, so...
Thank you.
They decided to kind of do what we're doing, and, but, and they also were considering moratorium, but they decided to go with regulations instead. So thinking it's just that they...
And I, I guess, excuse me if I can't, if I can't, Kenny probably doesn't have this?
Oh, you're right, yes.
Kenny, you have the other thing, at least you have the article that I sent you from the JI?
Yes, I have that.
Okay, so I think that's a good point, you know, so I think, I think you'll be all right by just having that for tonight anyways.
So I'll just kind of describe it at this point. They basically will allow a warehouse distribution center, provided that they have certain criteria by right, in other words, site plan, but otherwise, if they exceed those criteria by special use, the criteria includes the facility, the facility is greater than 200,000 square feet in floor area, and the ratio of loading docks of floor area does not exceed one loading dock per 15,000 square feet of floor area, and the ratio of trailer storage spaces to floor area does not exceed one trailer storage space per 7,500 square feet of floor area, and then they have a separating distance of 1,000 feet from the nearest residential zone. Now, those ratios, Matt and I were discussing it, and we're not sure where that came from. What was the criteria, how did they come up with those numbers, you know, why is 7,500 instead of 8,000, or whatever? So I do have a call into the town planner in Windsor, both of us know him, and I'm sure that we'll, we'll get some information as to where they came up with this criteria, but essentially, they're doing the same thing that we're looking to do. So, you know, I'm looking at this as, I think we should do the text change, that's just my opinion, and I understand that there's many out there in the town that would rather do a moratorium, but I feel that that would restrict development in town, and I think that this is a cleaner and safer way to do things.
And I think we decided at the last minute, just, I don't think you were here, Chris, we decided last minute, actually, we did an informal vote, I don't think we did a roll call vote, but it was four to three not to do the moratorium. So I think we'll stick with that, I mean, in good faith, I think that's the way we should stick. If we had a vote tonight, it might be different, but I don't think we should do that, I think that's unfair. We, we decided not to do the moratorium and try to at least investigate a text change instead, and I, and I think that's a good faith how we still should proceed. Just a couple of things, I just wanted to read from the article, which really, if you don't mind, which really made me really stop and think about some things, and I want to be able to share that with you guys, if you don't mind. Again, just as a rehash here, with a special use, this is again, this is from Mr. Bars, is, is that how you pronounce his name? I'm quoting him from the article. With a special use, you can weigh in on such factors as is it compatible with the neighborhood? Does it generate too much traffic? Is there sufficient utility capacity? Things of that nature come into play. The change also means that large warehouse proposals, or large proposals, we can get away from newer warehouses if we want to, will be subject to public hearings automatically instead of like what we did the last time for one of our applicants where we had to decide and kind of vote whether we wanted to do that. Special use automatically means there's a public hearing, and the commission can use resident feedback to then require changes to plans to address concerns of residents and board members, instead of on a site plan review, as you, we all know, we're kind of limited, kind of need to have some agreement from the applicant, per se. Then he goes on to, they go on to explain, that these changes don't allow the commission complete discretion, but it does allow the ability to deny a proposal deemed too intensive as an example, it gives us the ability to do that if so desired. It additionally allows the commission to mandate conditions meant to reduce impacts to surrounding residents. It allows us to do that, where in some cases, site plan reviews don't allow us to do that because they meet the minimum criteria. Again, minimum criteria, site plan reviews. Bars and the commission members agreed, they did not want to take the route of South Windsor, because South Windsor did do a moratorium, and we don't want to do that either, we're not doing that, on new warehouse development while the regulations were being drafted. So again, I just wanted to share that with you so at least you know where your chairman is coming from. I think there's other commissioners who might be thinking the same way, so I'll give up the, the mic now and let other people kind of speak if they so desire tonight. Commissioner Holinsky, you look like you're ready to say something.
Yeah, I've been thinking about this a lot since our last, last meeting, and I think if you're talking about, my biggest concern is the large warehouses and large industrial and I think, you know, with the issues we've had in town with warehouses going up, seems to me you want warehouses to be in kind of areas that don't impact neighborhoods as much. Now, for example, up by the prison, you know, some fields that are in outlying areas, that kind of thing. So you want to, you want to minimize the impact of these facilities to the neighborhood. I think that's probably my biggest concern. The second one is the traffic issue. You want to make sure you have proper traffic access to these facilities for the trucks to go through. Frankly, I think, you know, the ones, you know, we've approved in the past, I think we're going to end up with some large traffic problems in town and trucks going into these, these warehouses. You know, they need to be fairly accessible to main roads, or the roads to them need to be improved such that you can allow access to these warehouses. And that's kind of where I'm coming from, so I kind of like the special... And that's kind of where I'm coming from, so I, I kind of like the special, special use permit idea, because that, that kind of gives us some flexibility there, but I think maybe we need to go beyond that somehow and perhaps limit the size of these types of facilities to some reasonable level. Just, that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, yeah, with, with respect to the traffic on, on these types of uses, what, it's not, what, what triggers, what's the amount of traffic that would trigger an STC review? Is, is it number of, of trips generated, or is it size of building and type of building?
I believe it's the, I think it's anything over 200 parking spaces, new 200, new spaces.
It goes by parking spaces, whether it's employee parking and, or truck and tractor-trailer and so forth, because, you know, that gives me something to, to consider about. I, I don't want to sit here and, and be the traffic cop, I want, if the, if the applicant has, is compelled to do an STC, uh, traffic review study and so forth, then it kind of gets us off the hook, or, and it puts it all into the state's hands, which, you know, they do, they do a good job. The, the other thing is, looking at the regulations from Windsor, great information. I, I was curious as to how this would tie into, let's say, the two previous distribution centers, warehouse, and, and how, how that equates to these numbers, just, just as an idea, give it some perspective as to how would, how would those buildings be perceived at? I, I want to, I want to make sure that we're not putting a, a, too lesser, too much of a burden on, on anything, or, and where the, where a lot of applicants say, you know, we, we need more loading docks per square foot, or whatever it may be, but I, I just want to kind of do an analysis on that, if, if we could do just a quick math figure, because we, we know the sizes of those buildings, and we can count the docks, right, and we can kind of do some math there. And then they have, they show trailer storage and whatnot else, just as a, as something to look at. I just don't want to do a knee jerk reaction and say, hey, this looks good, let's, let's accept this. I'd like to, it be our own, and, and really look at it and so forth. I'm just against, you know, just taking something and say, yeah, okay, let's do that, like a moratorium, for instance.
No, that's a great idea, and I, I think we were thinking of doing that anyway, so that'd be part of the analysis.
Are loading docks?
Just trying to figure out where he came up, where they came up with those original numbers, so.
Yeah, I, I think, but this, this is great information to, as a starting point, it really is, so, thank you.
Are loading docks included in parking spaces, or they, would you happen to know in that, for generated traffic, or not?
No.
So it's just pure parking spaces, not including loading docks?
Correct, because theoretically, they're not parking at the loading dock. They shouldn't be.
Yeah.
But, that, like I said, theoretically.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Commissioner Alamo?
Yeah, so, I think I dovetail off what Ken was saying a little bit, and I think I talked about this last time, relative to our zoning in town.
Yeah.
And I think staff was going to get us some examples, or the amount of parcels that were affected that are near residential.
Well, here's the problem with that, if I can, if, if you don't mind.
No, no.
Here's the problem, not the problem, but here's the dilemma with that. So, yes, staff can go ahead and attempt to do that through G.I.S. and get us the amount of parcels that might fit a large building, but that doesn't necessarily mean that's, that's going to give you what you're looking for, because, I'll just go play devil's advocate, just to make this example. So they, they, they spend a lot of time and they give us that inventory of parcels that might fit one of those current developments that's happening right now. But in the meantime, they're not giving us all the information, because that's not what we asked for, the other information is, there might be three smaller lots all next to each other that don't meet that criteria. But then Lou Fiore, you know, I, I win the lottery, $20 million, and I decide I'm going to go in, I'm going to buy those three lots and come in here and combine them into one larger one, that wasn't in our inventory. So that's why, in some aspects, the inventory you're asking for really doesn't play a part in what we're discussing here, because that could happen at any time.
That would be a separate application of merging the lots.
It would be, but it.
We could deny that.
It does, but again, it doesn't really help, yeah, no.
I don't know how you could deny.
What, merging lots?
Yeah.
Well, don't they, don't they have to?
That's a right.
A right to merge lots?
Yeah.
Yes.
In commercial and residential?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I thought you couldn't, I thought you had to.
So that's why I'm saying that, for asking staff to go through and spend a lot of time trying to do that inventory, might not give us the benefit of what you're looking for, might not, might not be prevalent to what we even need to know, to be honest with you. Just throwing it out.
The other thing I was going to say about that is, so, 200,000 square foot, right, say it's 200,000 square feet, do we need to have, say, okay, if you're going to do a 200,000 square feet, you have to have at least X amount of acreage, so you don't impact the whole lot? No, you're going to have 1,000, say we do a 1,000-foot buffer, you have a 1,000-foot buffer, but, I mean, put a 200,000 square foot lot on, you know, just on a, a 200,000 square foot building, on what size lot?
Yeah.
That, we need, that's why.
Yeah. Some of this information's good, yeah.
Yeah, I keep thinking about the zoning and, you know, our, our zoning regulation changes coming up, and our P.O.C.D., but yeah, I mean, we should probably just take away that zoning that's near any kind of residential, just don't even allow that, change that zoning. I mean, I, I, we have to look at the big picture here, I mean, we have an empty industrial park.
The industrial park's a diff.
It's empty.
Because it's wellens.
Yeah, but, is it really wetlands, though? It used to be.
The industrial park's a different issue that we can discuss in nauseam.
Right, I, I know, so a 200,000 square foot building in the industrial park is small.
Yeah.
You know, so I don't know, it's just, I think this is a good starting template to start from, but I think we have to plug more things in to it.
Well, I like your idea about changing the zoning, but I don't know if we can go ahead and do that, but.
Well, we have to look at the whole community. I mean, does, you know, a building like on North Maple Street belong next to, out there? I mean, it was farmland, and next thing you know, it's, it's a big.
It was industrial.
It was industrial, right.
It was, that was industrial.
For a long time.
But it was changed to industrial.
No, it was industrial, it was just being used as farmland.
Right.
And Misty Meadow was part of that industrial that got rezoned.
To residential.
To residential. So that whole area was industrial, and then it was just being used as farmland, and people just assumed it was farmland, because nobody ever.
I thought the zoning got changed there like in the last 20 years.
No, no.
No.
No, no.
No, no.
Maybe 40 years.
Forty. I think the confusing thing is.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of components, I mean, and we're going to do, like, the P.O.C.D. has to be the planning of development. That's, I think, we have to get our arms around in our new zoning regulations to stop this from happening again.
I think the confusing part is there's no zone for agriculture. It can be anywhere in town, but there's no agriculture zone, per se.
And that's another thing, because we want to protect our farmlands, so we want to keep our farming, so it's a big picture.
Other towns have agricultural zones, but we don't.
Ours is in the R-33, R-88 areas.
It can be anywhere but the industrial park.
Right, right.
We have a big opportunity coming up here, though, with, you know, in the next six or eight months, and again, I'm looking at the big picture, I'm for, you know, doing something like this, and it's a great starting point, but it's going to be our charge. Look, and this is going to be the board that's going to do the P.O.C.D., and we're going to do.
We'll be doing the P.O.C.D. in September.
Right.
That's our goal, to have that in front of you for September. The zoning regulations, I think the goal is, well, can I throw January of 2023 out? Laurie and Matt, yeah.
It's going to be this board. It's going to be the makeup of this board that's going to do those two big, huge.
Absolutely.
Projects that are going to go forward for a long time.
But P.O.C.D. is more than just us, we have to.
Well, yeah, we have to.
And then the council has to approve.
No, I understand, but I mean, this is a, this is a great opportunity, I like to say.
Yeah.
That we have.
Yeah.
To get all these issues, you know, get everybody's input, get these things straightened out.
Yep.
You know, I don't want a piecemeal thing, it seems like we're knee jerking here.
I think, I think.
But it's a good start to stop a big warehouse.
I think so, I think.
Coming in.
I think as.
I'm good with that, but I'm looking at the big picture.
If I may, if I don't mind stepping on Commissioner Holinsky's, I think he said it very nicely the last meeting. We, we need to, we need to start addressing this, somewhere or another, and not, not wait for P.O.C.D. or our regulation changes in January.
Right, but I just want to keep that in mind, that we do have a great opportunity coming soon, that we can address every issue.
Yep. Well, we're tempted anyways.
Well, we're going to try our best.
Yeah.
Well, you don't want somebody to come back and say, oh, remember 20 years ago when that Lou Fiore was the chairman, right? No, we're going to do it right, Luke.
We all, we all still carry the sins of our fathers. Believe me, I know that better than most of you guys.
With, with.
Can we, yeah, go ahead, Ken, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Just, you know, just hearing all the conversation here, I, I think maybe, maybe it's something that could be done in stages, you know? I tend to lean towards doing some zoning changes, because I think that's the only way to, to really nip this overall problem in the bud. I mean, you know, obviously, people who live in, lived in Misty Meadow, they were living next to a tobacco field, yeah, 20, 20 years, you know? And all of a sudden, this, this big building pops up next to them, you know? And so, I'm sure most of the people weren't even aware of that, or if they were, they weren't worried about it because it never changed, you know? And then all of a sudden, you know, in a couple of years, it all changed. So, so I think you need to designate areas for these large buildings that are in more remote areas, and if that's a zoning change, so be it. Maybe an initial way to start to move towards that is to, you know, get into this special use type thing that you see in Windsor and, and so forth. You know, and, and I'm kind of surprised at South Windsor, too, because I worked in South Windsor for five years, and, and, you know, their warehouses are basically in industrial areas, there are not a lot of houses near the warehouses I saw, and the ones along Route 5. Yeah, yeah, right, right in there, I mean, that's perfect, I mean, there, you know, there weren't any houses, you know, until you get farther on in that area, but they didn't, weren't affected by the warehouse. So I think that's the kind, maybe a combination that they need to move forward, move forward.
Thank you, Ken. Commissioner Petronell?
Yeah, with respect to, you know, the, the parcels that are out there that might be available to this, I mean, it's pretty simple, you look at a zoning map, they're all color coded, industrial one, industrial two, zone, whatever's, and then whatever's not developed, that's basically what you're looking at.
I think Kieran asked for something specific that was next to residential. I think that's right, because Kieran wasn't here tonight, that's why I wanted to bring it back up tonight.
But parcels can be merged, and, and, and that's pretty simply done, but.
By right, they can be merged by right?
Yeah.
By right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can take three lots and, and draw one big building that covers, uses all three of them, submit it to us, and, and if it gets approved, it basically comes merged, and that's, that's about it.
And it could be next to a residential area.
Well, it would have to meet the buffer requirements and so forth, yeah.
The house could be in an industrial zone.
Right, right, right.
Laurie.
It's, there's a lot to it.
Yep.
Yeah. Laurie, we have a full-scale zoning maps, color-coded, we have those small ones in our, in our binders that you give us, which are, you know, hard to read, hard to see.
They are.
And, and if I can get a full-size, a full-scale one, and I, I think everybody should have one, but this way here, you can open up the whole town and see a 24-by-36-inch map or whatever, and get a, a much better perspective of it, you can actually read the streets and so forth. That small one that's, that's in a, in a packet is, even, it's so blurred, too, because it's so reduced, you can't even read the streets, even with a magnifying glass. But if we have something, you know, that, that's full-size, that'd be great. Even if you have it just electronically, you can, you can email it, and, and we'll have it that way.
Oh, no, I'd like the paper.
If, if you, I mean, it's in the G.I.S. If you go to the G.I.S. and you collect, and you select the zoning layer, it shows you the entire town in all the zones.
On the G.I.S.?
Yeah.
There's a zoning layer on that? Okay.
So, I, the, the, the way that map was created, I mean, the way, it, it comes out at like 4 by 3, it's, it's massive.
Yeah.
We could try to print them smaller, you know, it's a lot of coloring and stuff, so, and hopefully, we're going to be changing it, but I, I'll see what we can do.
Yeah.
To get you a larger, a larger hard copy.
On the G.I.S. and on the computer, that's fine, but you, you, if, if you're going to look at a, a big area in perspective, you've still got to, got the size of the computer screen where you don't, where you don't, you know, the whole 3-by-4 sheet gives you the whole perspective of, you know, the town, per se.
Okay.
I mean, if, if, well, I, I got the ability to, to print a large format, so.
They do, you guys do.
Oh, yeah, no, we, we, it's just, it's a color, it's a color plotter.
Yeah.
So we have to make sure we have enough ink for all of those.
Yeah. Go to the register of voters' office, they got a lot of ink.
I don't have a color printer, honest to gosh, I don't have a color printer in the office.
I don't have a color printer either.
We talked about it.
Put it in your bunch.
But poor Matt, he's been getting, when I go and see him, he gets an education on his own, Matt, we talked about it.
Hey, I, I agree, I think, I think, oh, sorry. I agree, I, I think we need large copies of that somehow, either something we can put on a computer screen that we can expand, or frankly, I'd like to see a large copy as well, like John said, because, you know, I was poring over with my magnifying glass last night.
All right, Ken. Chris?
Yeah, on that note, just even, even the digital PDF version of this is, is really grainy, so, but I'll, I'll definitely check out the, the G.I.S. layer. So, yeah, it's, it's tough even, even on the computer to read this, because, yeah, you still can't see street names, and it's, it's nice and easy to just pull up a PDF.
Let's do it the way they did it before they had computers, let's go back to that.
Actually, I do have one that I had gotten when I first got on the commission, but it's probably obsolete, but it was a full-size map, and it really does help, because you can see the streets, you know?
Yeah.
So, it, it is a benefit.
So there seems to be an agreement, at least ask staff to go ahead and talk to the planner in Windsor to get some definition on these, their algorithm, where they come up with the, you know, loading dock for 15,000, see some information for us, and to at least proceed. Is there any other questions for staff tonight on this, or anything else someone wants to bring up about this at all? Chris?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on this, I, I think it's a good balance, I can't speak to the exact numbers, and, and I second Commissioner Petronella, and seeing like real examples for it, especially the recent examples, to see how those would go up against these numbers or comparable numbers, that's a great idea. But I, I like the idea of striking that balance between, you know, not being so restrictive for things within means, so not every warehouse is a special permit if it fits within, you know, that, that, what we deem, you know, reasonable. So I think that's a really important point that's being made by Windsor, and, and I like that, that, that concept, and it's a good, I think, notion to, for us to dig a little deeper into.
Thank you, I think, I think, Chris, we used a key word here, reasonable, you know, we want to find something that's reasonable.
Everything good happens in a reasonable area.
Reasonable area. Anything else on that, we can, you know, staff's got a pretty good idea what we're looking for, for next meeting if possible, if you, okay? Thank you, thank you, good conversations, thank everyone, very good. We'll move on, any correspondence? We'll move on, any correspondence? Any commissioners' correspondence? Well, I have, I have one thing I'd like to talk about, because I'm going to be hypocritical about myself. After reviewing and talking with multiple people, attorneys and staff, I think it's best that we leave our P and Z rules alone and not adopt what I brought up last meeting about trying to change the agenda for a couple of reasons. First of all, the head poll material for the town of Anfield, I talked with her about it, because I know from a Robert Rules order, how the spot, we were making a motion to adjust the agenda.
I thought it made sense.
Yeah, even though it's not clean to do it, when we do the minutes, it's certainly okay and fine from a Robert Rules order to do it there, so we don't really need to change the agenda, even though it would be cleaner if we did. And then I actually got some input about moving the commissioners' correspondence, I said move that to like number five. And then a good point was brought to me is that, rehashed into me, so I went home and think is that, we're like a jury, and all of us have to really be careful about what we say in the public, even when we're not sitting here. And a lot of what, through the years, and I was critical at times, too, with the people who sat here, was always saying, you know, boy, they're not conversing with the people, they're not getting the information from the planning, zoning, they're not, like the town council and the Board of Ed, they're not conversing with us, they're tight-lipped, they keep things to themselves. Yeah, yeah, we do, and there's a reason sometimes why we do. And now, myself included, being the old politician that I am, if we put, you know, commissioners' correspondence up higher so that we're responding to questions like that, like the council and the Board of Ed do, we might inadvertently accidentally be stepping in it. So maybe it's just best that we just leave the agenda the way it is, and more I thought about it, and talk to some people, and I think we'll just move on the way we are, if that's okay with you. I just wanted to give you guys all an update on that.
But I thought your changes made sense.
It does.
But now that you found out, obviously, we're going to leave it...
I think we should, yeah, but thank you, thank you for that, it does kind of make sense.
Yeah, I thought it was pretty good, yeah.
But I think we probably should just leave it the way it is.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, thank you. Director of Planning Report.
So, I think, Linda, you had asked about the traffic impact study. So ironically, we're like at the point where they're going to be coming to planning and zoning either at the next meeting or the following meeting.
Yeah, who?
So, I'm not going to give you a whole bunch of information, because we're still working out a couple of kinks, and then they're probably going to come here and kind of give you a high-level explanation as to where we stand and what we've done, and then at the, at a next meeting, we'll have like more of a public meeting and invite the public to kind of come and comment with the planning and zoning commission as to the direction we go in. So probably within the next month, you'll be seeing probably more than you want to on it.
Oh, interesting. No, because we have some major issues that have been brought before us about traffic, and I think that is a big piece of it.
So, you know, we did the visual preference study, and they've done market research, and, you know, all sorts of other traffic studies and things of that nature, and they're just kind of taking all of that information now and trying to come up with a proposed market analysis of what, what would be the highest and best use and probably the highest requirement for parking, and base that on, and they'll use that as their basis for performing a traffic impact study, assuming the worst-case scenario almost, as far as density, so...
Great, thank you.
Is that, is that the study that was done around the old mall?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's going to be contained just around that area? That's not encompassing from the Suffield Bridge to the Summers Line?
No, it was, it was, we tried to get it to be more encompassing, but money talks, and that's, that got narrowed down to pretty much just around the mall area.
It's still something, yeah.
And seeing it's around the mall area, why don't they have the mall people come, too, so we can get an update from them?
The mall people are weighing in on this as well.
Good. Because the people in the community really want to know what's going on with that mall.
Yes.
We heard it during these warehouse projects.
Yep.
I mean, nothing's going to go on?
Day one, that is just money, nothing's going to happen.
Put your mic on.
Okay, yeah, please don't speak without speaking to everybody.
Yeah, so, go ahead.
Be careful of him, careful.
Yeah, as we know, the mall's probably going to stay like that for a little bit, until there's a new buyer, is what I'm thinking.
You know, and I've asked about them, because I know we, we went through a lot of work to do, when it came before us, to divide up the mall into separate parcels, you know, we did a lot of work, and there was a lot of pushback, too. There was, you know, the public spoke, there was people against it, for various reasons. So I just think an update for the community, as well as us, would be, you know, if they have anything, I know if it's negotiating, you know, leases, they're not going to talk about that, but just something, because that way the community will know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else, Laurie?
No, I think that's it for now.
The applications to be received, anything you want to report on?
My God, actually, we forgot about that. Did we get any new applications? We got, we got an application for the site plan for the rezon that we did tonight.
Yeah.
And, oh my God, this is all...
Are we going to have, do we have anything to do with the Kelly for that changes that are going down on the old Anfield lumber? Is that, has that eventually come in front of us, or was that, was that all done by, was that Z B A or inland wetland?
I don't think we've received that application, have we?
No, we haven't got that application.
We're still working with them.
They were more, I think, of course, that was intended for Spring Street, but they were very intent on getting the prospect, the 98 prospect.
Yeah. Okay, okay, that's coming down the line.
The old Peerless Tool Building?
Yeah, remember the fire? Remember the fire, 77?
Yeah, I was there.
Yeah, remember that, yeah, remember that to this day?
When you said Spring Street, you's meaning the old Peerless Tool Building, because they own that, right? What, he said, he said Spring, yeah, yeah.
I can't get into the network.
I think that's what he means.